Yeah, so a lot of what I say is that these backwards or whatever. But the least if you want to get some rest right at least. So for example, that would be.
Yeah, but they're paying seven of them.
The chances are that really land constructed are pretty limited, right? So it's really balancing this. And just say this is a situation where there's a downside to somebody who don't fund. So if you use our construction, that's right. And you can pick out your ones that wasn't as old, just like you wasn't the outside. I mean, he might sell the sixteen penny. So if you look at, you guys want to blow the earth. And if there's one, it's ten thousand. Which means they need to be interacted with. We don't have the lots. We didn't give the money and somebody built on something.
We don't want to hit two. We got another little part of this.
Thank you.
Whatever. Whatever.
We don't want to hit two. Good. We got another little part of this.
Have you been really excited when you eat those?
Thank you.
That's what I said. Whatever. Whatever. I mean, many of us are smaller. That have been a lot of people. So let's say you do really good. That'd be a flyer. Yeah. This is scary. There's ones that buy it. They're not dealing with any of those. You said that one's here. You don't want to talk about it. This is scary. There's ones that buy it. They're not dealing with any of those. You said that one's here. You don't want to talk about it. This is scary. There's ones that buy it. They're not dealing with any of those. Yeah, but you don't have to. So basically, so you have an awful lot of questions. This is what happens. I'm trying to get it. Simple, fantastic. I mean, call on the song. Oh, yeah. We don't work. Right. We're working. We're working. I'm trying to get it. I'm trying to get it. I want mother. But I'm trying to get one of these. That's not happening. We need to figure out. Sixteen to drive. We all start driving last month. Because we got more. So nice. Yeah, like I was saying, you. Something like that. 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 It's just gonna last four years. Somebody's lost their officer. 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 Obviously. She is just right. There. I had a guy. He's like a horn. And I've got to do some further internal that instead of custom.
It's good. My brother. Hey, so what do you think school? Hang on like that.
They just got back from a transfer. So they told him. So those guys. They were part of the same.
It's still me no more time.
The kids kind of have to homeschool.
I wonder if you can get in a lost time on that too.
Well, that's. Yes. Something you want to feel spent there. So that's all. They tried. They did. They were taking to the shop. Everything.
You just kill them for life.
Yeah.
As long as it's.
Davey, you surviving?
We're good. Just running late today.
Yeah, hey, you know what? Luckily, it was only an hour, man. And it was slow, so it didn't. The pain wasn't, there was no pain. Yeah, I thought, I thought, man, I'm gonna be sore, but yeah. I said, man, I got lucky. I think it's because it was slow riding. Yeah, but I was expecting it, but it didn't happen. Right there, they got some pay to go riding for an hour. That's enough. Yeah, yeah. You go all the way to the top of the mountain, you come all the way back down. Takes a good hour, but that's about all you want. That's all you want on it is about an hour.
At least you know it's gonna come. We need, we need a brass.
Say, Rob. How are you today?
And then it's the button under here.
All right. Do I? I know. I haven't seen you in a while. Who gave us? Oh, you're showing. Oh, it's all cases I'm aware of. I think everybody's had a Monday today.
St. Patrick's Day was last week, brother.
Just letting you know. I'm still hungover. Go on, man. Wiped out.
Just tired.
A little bit of today. Yeah. Yeah, let's just go with that. I forgot my glasses. She's right there. Don't know if any of the other ones are coming. Guess they'll be here when they get here. Two.
We'll be right here.
Quiet, bro. Is your shut down? I left my packet in the trunk. I'll just run it by. If I call you Shannon, just forgive me and.
I'll roll with it. My hair's getting a little wider, so it's.
I understand that. He's got his points. I'm sure he's all over. All about action. David. Any knowledge? Me either. I didn't exactly check my phone. Oh, Mr. Bolt made it. He always makes a dramatic last minute in here. That's all right. He had thirty seconds to spare at least.
Oh, sorry. Tell me about it.
Oh, we got it, Jake.
Let's hope that you know what I'm saying. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Nice hat. It's just took me so long. What you had to wear. I said, do that one in the trash. Have you heard about those people's customer service? Oh, my God. What's that word?
A hat like that comes with a bulbous suit, right? Probably, yeah. Y'all ready? I guess we're gonna go with the shirt. Okay. I call this regular session of the Livingston City Commission to order. Veronica, roll call, please.
All right, Mayor Roberts.
I'm here.
Commissioner Bolt.
Here.
Commissioner Trujillo.
Here.
Commissioner White. And Commissioner Gandy.
Here. All right.
This evening, I asked Patrick from Methodist Church to lead some prayer. Can you do the podium, sir?
You pray with me. Dear the Father, Lord, so grateful to be here this evening. And Lord, as we get ready to start this meeting, give our city leaders the courage to do what's right. Give them a sense of humility and just continue to bless their lives. Lord, we pray for our community as we grow. Give us, give us patience in dealing with some of the things going on and just give us an understanding to why the city does the things that they do. In your name we pray. Amen.
John said it quietly.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeos symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
May be seated. Oh, not that I know of. Do you know what we're gonna take?
I'd just make a motion to accept the agenda as submitted.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to, to, excuse me, approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All right, Veronica. I'm sorry.
Robert.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Bolt.
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner White. And Commissioner Gandy.
So before I vote, just so you know, we have to rotate each one of the voting orders, so each time you'll need to change that. So in yes. It doesn't have to be a complicated variation either.
I think it is complicated as necessary.
And if you want, you can, oh, never mind. We will wait on her.
I'm here.
I was fixing to say that she could just say that you weren't present and wouldn't have to call your name, but.
Here.
Okay.
I have rights over me. Change.
All right. Yes, we did. Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, for the consideration of the minutes of March tenth, twenty twenty five. Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second for the adoption of the minutes. Any corrections, additions, or change, or discussion? Hearing none. Veronica.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt.
Yes.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes. All right, brings to our Commissioner Stafford report. Ms. Veronica, do you have anything this evening?
I don't want.
All right. We're glad that you're able to help us out this evening. Isabella.
Yes, sir.
Chief, I bet you have something.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, officer of activity for the last two weeks of this month. We have two certified police officers that we, that we give offers to. And we have one certified, uncertified officer that almost completed his process. And just a reminder, Laces having the annual celebration, Light the Blue. Is scheduled Saturday, the March the twenty ninth, ten a.m. to three p.m. at the fairgrounds. There'll be activity, foods, fun for all kids and all the local. The Police Department has acquired funding for, from a private donor for a drum program. And so we have, if you have any questions.
All right, Commissioners. Do we all get a shot at the drum?
Yep.
Okay. Maybe they need to buy two.
Fifty thousand.
I'm sorry?
Fifty thousand.
That's a good drum. All right. Thank you, Chief. All right, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission. So the bad ambulances.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes. All right, brings to our Commissioner's staff to report. Ms. Veronica, you have anything this evening?
I don't have.
All right. We're glad that you're able to help us out this evening. Isabella?
Yes, sir.
Chief, I bet you have something.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, officer of activity for the last two weeks of this month. We have two certified police officers that we, that we give confidential offers to, and we have one certified, uncertified officer that almost completed his process. And just a reminder, Laces is having the annual celebration, Lighted Blue, is scheduled Saturday, the March the 29th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the fairgrounds. There'll be activity, foods, fun for all kids and all the local. The Police Department has acquired funding for, from a private donor for a drone program, and so we have, have any questions?
All right, Commissioners. Do we all get a shot at the drone?
Yep.
Okay. Maybe, may need to buy two.
Fifty thousand.
I'm sorry?
Fifty thousand.
That's a good drone. All right. Thank you, Chief. Partie?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, so the bad ambulances have been put into service, they went into service Friday.
That's the good news.
And then, we had a structure fire this morning, and we had a truck, well, our trucks were on scene, and it, one of the bad ambulances was on scene, and we had a pedestrian back into one of our new brand of ambulances. So, it's been taken to the shops, and it's already been looked at, and it's gonna be at around $3,000, because they're gonna have to replace the whole door due to the fact that it'd been all the creases. So, yay. Now that the ambulances are in service, and the old ambulances are taken out, we would like to donate our old EMS tube to the county. They last year recently donated the two command trucks to us, and we want to repay that favor because they want that ambulance for the fairgrounds, for fair rodeos, Cinco de Mayo, any events they have out there where they do the EMS. So, I would like to be able to donate that to them. Do we need to, like, make a...
We will have to.
Yes.
But, yeah.
I just wanted to bring it up, so...
Chief, what's the approximate value? Do you think it's... How many dollars does it have?
It's...
Half a million.
Uh, probably about $400,000. So, um, we did, we held a new hire testing room on 21st, and we didn't hire anybody from that testing, so we're going to keep it open and hopefully be able to test in another couple of weeks and fill that last position. And like Chief Clark said, the Lighted Up Blues this coming Saturday at the fairgrounds, and Fire Department will have a booth, and we'll also have trucks there as well for the kids. So, other than that, I don't have anything else. I will stop for your questions.
Commissioners. Well, it's been quite a night so far. All right. Thank you, Partie. Commissioner Bolt?
Yes. Again, I'd like to thank everyone for taking time out of their schedule to come to the commission meeting, be a part of it. I appreciate that very much. Any questions that you have, any knowledge that you have, more than happy to listen to it, definitely. Came in here, it was a nice t-shirt, put here next month. April was autism awareness, and it says, as autism awareness month approaches, Livingston Youth Center provided us with these t-shirts, and I want to thank them very much for that. I have a grandson that has autism, so, anything that people do to help out, donate, take their time, anything is greatly appreciated. So, thank you. Couple things, I see going down Gum Street, we're putting in a new entranceway to the cemetery. I think that as much been needed, appreciate that. Just wanted to ask, Robert, are we putting in one new one on each side, or just one...
We're just gonna do that, that one second one to, you know, facilitate people in that funeral, so be able to come out the other side. We're gonna finish up, hopefully this week, we'll finish it all together.
Okay, but thank you very much, much needed, appreciate that. Seen they're doing some ground work down over by the Albertsons, I don't know if that's part of the Albertsons project, or a lot, but...
I haven't noticed it.
Yeah.
Yes.
They're, they're moving ground, straining dirt, so I'm happy to see that, and it's a beautiful day out today.
Say what?
I hope everybody was able to enjoy it. I just want to remind you that it's still early. Don't put your tomato plants and everything in the ground yet, because we're gonna get a frost. I can guarantee it, because I've done that numerous years, so just hold off a little bit, but it'll all be good.
Groundhog saw shadow.
Yeah, groundhog saw shadow, so, but thank you very much.
Make sure. No, I'm not. I was thinking this...
If I was gonna purchase something like a shirt or shoes, where should I do that? Uh, can I think? You know what, I got a good idea. Shop local, buy local, eat local, do whatever you can local. Just seeing this shirt, thinking of my grandson, it's very important, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Trujillo?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Commissioner White?
I'm good.
All right, Commissioner Gandy? Hard act to follow over here, so, you know.
Yes, so, um...
Just tell them all our stuff.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good this evening.
Oh, okay. Melissa, anything now?
We're still just working on getting my account caught up, keeping the vendors paid.
Okay, always important. Two, two thoughts. Put the money in the bank, pay the vendors, that's pretty much how I operate, so.
Great.
That's right. Thank you. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I delivered to you last week the responses to some financial questions Commissioner Bolt had asked, which were prepared by Melissa and Ed Fierro. I hope that they somewhat answered your questions, I thought they were very good questions. On that note, six person hiring board interviewed three applicants for the finance director position last week, and at this point, we're continuing our search for additional applicants to present to the commission for consideration. Our GRT number for the month of January came in last week at $588,679. Now, for those who pay attention to these things, that may come as a shock, since that is the lowest GRT number since April of 2022. The good news is that while this figure is accurate, it represents a one-time clawback by the Department of Taxation and Revenue regarding a change which occurred in the transportation and warehousing sector of our GRTs. There had been a correction to a location code for a company that services wells in the county. Thus, there was a 36-month clawback in the amount of $451,721.79. This means that our GRT number without this one-time aberration would have been 1.04 million. More importantly, the negative impact to the city for this company's location designation will only be about 17,000 a month going forward. I have reached out to Senator Gallegos. Commissioner Gandy reminded me that a similar thing had happened in Eunice in 2014, in the amount of 2.2 million dollars, so I'm attempting to gather some information as to whether we have any recourse in this matter. It was done without any notification, it was a complete surprise. Luckily, our GRTs are healthy enough that we can absorb it, but, you know, it's 40% of January's GRTs, so I will keep you posted on that. Few other items, Robert and I, and some people from the wastewater department are going to Las Cruces this Friday to visit their wastewater treatment plant, which was recently redone. Pedagru and Associates was here today doing a GPS locate on a 24-inch water main that comes up from a well field, and I think they were successful in mapping that, so we finally know where, where it goes and where it crosses under the highway. And we're gonna do the same on some additional lines where we're looking to expand our well field. I believe Joe from the Youth Center wanted to briefly update the commission about what's going on there.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm just gonna give a quick update as to what we've had going on with the Youth Center as of recent. I'm gonna start off with, I did shop local. These shirts that are on your tables are from Lock and Stitch. He helped me get them printed and with design and everything, and I'd just like to ask you all to help us celebrate autism. I mean, autism is a, is a, is a factor, and it's more prevalent nowadays, and for my facility, we deal with quite a few on some form of the spectrum, so it, it does take a special talent, and it takes a, a special heart to be able to, to get across to. In general, over the last few months, we've maintained about an average of daily attendance of 22 kids, steady ones, here and there we'll pick up a new one and fall off here or there. We are currently in search for a bus driver. We have applications, we've narrowed down a few, we'll start interviews next week. One of them, I believe, has a CEO, so it'll make it a quicker route for us to get in, and hopefully at least establish a bus route before this year ends out. On top of that, we've been offering an open gym on Friday nights from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. I actually stayed behind this past Friday and overseeing the open gym, and we're getting anywhere from 25 to five or six kids. It just depends on the night and what's going on for the, for the city or the schools. And I really have to say, these kids are, are super respectful, they keep, they keep the facility clean for me once they get finished with, with the evening, they'll pick up, clean up their mess. The comment that was made to me Friday is, we just appreciate having something that we can do on Friday evening. So, I thought that was, that was pretty cool. And it actually meant a lot to me, and I'm trying to open it up four days throughout the week. Some kids will have them have a chance to be able to get in and have something to do besides turn around and cause havoc. Also, I am in the works right now with NMSU, NMSU steam outreach. They're offering a $35,000 equipment grant, which they'll purchase the equipment and give to us. But, the grant ultimately comes from Penn, NMSU kind of plays the middleman. We, I've been working with Leslie on it, so we provide them the proposal, they forward it up to Penn, Penn decides if they'll take the proposal with our program and come back with our equipment. They'll release the money to NMSU, NMSU will purchase the wish list of equipment and send it back to us. My goal with this is, wanna start a media production program, like a webcast, podcast for junior high to high schoolers. Get them familiar with things like that, a lot of kids are interested in that right now. I wanna do a spin where they have the opportunity to share the community from their point of view, so we can get the kids' view of it. It'll get them interested, and ultimately, we'll be able to make small commercials and things like that, video editing as the program grows. But, this is, this is something, I've been working with N most, New Mexico out of school time, and they've been working with me really well. Any kind of opportunities they feel that might help us grow, they'll forward it to me, and I'll look into it. If I think it's, if it's something that fits us, I usually go to Leslie, and we work together trying to get it put together. We just completed the spring break program. We, we had nine kids, 10 registered, nine showed up. We had a blast, getting them engaged, science projects, physical activity, arts and crafts, just keep them engaged and away from a screen, whether it be a TV screen, iPad screen, a phone screen. That's been our goal since day one, and we did a really good job. We did do something a little bit different with our spring break program, we did allow a certain amount of computer time, so we could start stretching out and getting our computer lab used, and seeing what else we might need, what other programs we might need, but, for the most part, we, we tried to keep them away from the screens. Last, we're working on a summer program right now that'll function similar to the one last year. We'll bring in speakers, we'll start lining up speakers throughout the community to come in and speak with the, with the kids, express what they do with the community. As, as in the other program, we also, we started off our day kind of like school, pledge of allegiance, pledge to the zia. We did a question of the day, and then a, kind of like an opinion exchange, we let the kids voice what's going on, like giving them their voice, and giving them the courage to speak up. I think it grows our community when we do stuff like that, let our kids have a voice, so it's something I've implemented. On top of that, the Child and Family Services has offered, they'll provide lunches for us, wouldn't be no cost to us, it'll drastically reduce our, our cost for the program. In all honesty, that's, that's a big part of our, our budget, is the food for the program, feeding breakfast, lunch, and snack. I also came across today, USDA has a program as well, and it's something I'm gonna outgive with Leslie about, and see if we could venture out into, it's a reimbursement. So, they have reimbursed for each meal between $3 and $5 per kid to us as, as a summer food program. So, either way we go, it'll drastically reduce the cost of our summer program, and I think it'll, it'll benefit us in the long run, giving us more in budget for materials and supplies for the other, other parts of the program. Any questions?
I have one. Commissioners, on the school bus, we're looking for a driver. Do we have school bus?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, we do.
These schools have approved us for a route for the afternoons, that would hit all the schools in the eligible age group. Problem is, it would be a part-time school bus driver, maybe two hours in the afternoon, and that would cut down from two to one the times the parents have to go to the center. All they have to do is come pick up their kids at the end of the day. So, they, they're willing to provide a school bus and training, maybe a retired person having a CDL helps, but if not, they would train them to get their CDL parent. Just haven't found that unique person yet.
Would, would there be waivers, any waivers signed? I don't know, Patrick? Would we need waivers signed for them?
liability.
Oh, okay, okay.
And we have a staff member of the Youth Center on the bus as well.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, sir.
Joe, what's the average age of your student?
Average age right now is probably about nine.
Okay.
And it spans from six to 11, so the average age is about nine.
Okay, yeah, I'll get with you maybe sometime this week, I'd like to talk to you about some of the stuff that you're doing.
Appreciate you. Not a problem.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, lastly, Robert Perez has an update about some work we've been doing in baseball fields outside town. I believe he had a question about a tree in Shaq Wells Park.
Commissioner, Mayor, City Manager, first of all, that tree that's in the, in the pictures, I don't know. It's, everybody says they like it for pictures, everybody goes out and takes pictures, and, but that tree is half dead, three quarters of the way dead, it's in the way of another tree. Let's see, ask you guys, what you guys thought. We need to cut it down, we just need to cut it down, so don't wind up breaking and hurting somebody, when somebody's climbing it, and then we'll be in trouble, so.
There may be a little backlash.
I'm sure there'll be a little outcry, but...
I mean, it's, it's...
Isn't it?
It's a safety issue, that's what there is to it. You got your pictures, nobody else is gonna get them, so... Well, people know that it's gonna be coming down, maybe they'll rush over there and get their pictures taken and break the crowd.
Well, I think just, it's only gonna get hurt.
Well, I, I agree, I agree. That's why when Robert said that, I was going like this, it needs to be gone.
Yes, sir. And then the, the baseball fields, we've started working on the baseball fields, the one across the street from the park, we've started with all of them, we've started with planting some grass with the ones crossing from the park, repensing and repainting and redoing a bunch of stuff there. Maybe we can get the four and five-year-olds, T-ball kids there this year without the bunch of stickers is what the goal is. Hopefully, we can get that grass and stuff going. The rest of the fields, south, north love and the ones over here on the, on the south love are greening up, we started watering, we're starting, I'm gonna get with the schools, I think they, there's gonna help by the ones on north love, to get some of the fines for, we need for the infield, and the rest of it's gonna be on us.
Maybe not.
Maybe not, but we're, we're hoping that, there's some, some stuff working, maybe we can get some stuff in there. But hopefully, we can get those fields going back again, so we can start using them again instead of everybody going to hogs and playing over there all the time. Like he says, keep local, you know, play local, shop local, run local, whatever we need to do.
Play local, new one. Oh, that's a...
It's gonna take... Well, more. You know, it's something that for here, you know, as we go forward, keep everybody here, so hopefully, there'll be something...
You got the youth center to play in, you got the baseball centers, all right.
People are gonna be coming here.
Nobody's gonna be in the streets anymore.
People from hogs are gonna be coming here.
That'd be awesome. Then that bausch...
Any questions, sir?
Questions? Yeah, Commissioner Bolt?
I could get with you sometime this week.
Yes, sir. I'll call you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, that's all I have for a staff comment, but I have some non-action items to follow.
Question? I have one on, it's on one of your graphs and I forgot my packet in my truck. So, it's the one where you show how GRT basically follows the oil. Commissioner White happens to have...
Yes, sir.
The oil price. I kind of figured, I know we've looked at this many times, but...
Chip Low and I, you know, we try to find the perfect parameter of what, like...
Right.
I'm not saying it tracks exactly, but if you pull up the tenure chart, it does kind of go with it.
I figured that the Y-axis is price of oil per barrel. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And also...
What does the GRT, what it, what does it track? Is that in...
Like, 80 would be 800,000. So, you only need one...
Okay, so the price is in, the price per barrel is in dollars.
Yes, sir.
And then the blue, which is the GRT, would be in...
Add 10,000 to the back of the add.
Okay, yeah. No...
So, the 80 would be 800,000.
800,000 would be, yeah, that's right. 10,000, yes. Yeah, you got it.
So, I kind of overlapped it there. Obviously, the hit we took this month because of that one time, you know, kind of messed this chart up.
Yeah, I understood, yeah.
But, yeah, and Chip looks at rig count. I look at rig count and the price of oil, but just try to look at everything.
But more than likely, was the price of oil goes up, more people try to move to the community as they move to the community. Then we have more building and...
Retail.
Retail that way. So, it does kind of fall into a certain degree, but if you have more building, building the homes, structures, businesses coming in, then that reflects, you know, because the price of oil is kind of down, but we're still in that growing state.
There's a lag.
There's a little lag there.
About six months.
But I think if we ever get to that point where we're consistently building homes and different things like that, you know, hospitals constantly building, different things, those are the things that really generate what we need.
Very true. Absolutely. All right, go ahead.
I have some more questions.
Finance?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
If you want us to digest them and return them to you, awesome. If you need them, Ed is in the back.
Yeah, there are some questions regarding some of the answers.
Okay.
And some new questions.
Awesome.
All right. Anything further? Hearing that. Ms. Bob?
Mayor Commissioners, I was just, everybody's talking about Light It Up Blue. That's just where the LACES, the proceeds go to LACES, which is our local autistic awareness, our local autistic school and everything. So, yeah, everybody go out there and support that event this weekend on Saturday.
Okay, thank you. You'll have an item later on.
Yeah, I have an item later on, but Street Construction on Jackson's moving along really well. They're getting most of the baseboards in, so they should be ready for paving in the next week up there.
Still shooting for April?
Huh?
Are we still shooting for April?
Oh, for Main Street?
Oh, you're talking about Cheryan on Jackson. Oh, awesome.
Mine is moving along swiftly.
Smoothly, okay.
Yeah. Main Street, yes, they are set to do some more paving next week with Main Street.
Well, when you talk to Jackson, I was just thinking, sorry, Main Street, you know, after...
Street to street, right?
Street to street, right?
Crystal?
Yeah.
The only question I had is all the vegetation they're planting, or who's going to be responsible for that?
It'll be us. We will be responsible for the, to upkeep the easement and maintains the vegetation. It's set on sprinkler systems. It'll be set on climbers that I'll go through with the parks or streets. Who's ever going to make sure those stay running? We'll go through those climbers and all that with them at the end of the church. We'll have a meeting set with...
That question came from some of the business owners. They want to know if they're going to be responsible, who's going to be responsible.
Well, it'd be nice if they pick up trash out of it. It was in it. It isn't from the business.
Make it nice in front of the place, yeah, exactly.
Ultimately, it's in the state easement. We're to do the maintenance on that.
Thank you. Anything further?
Crystal, as far as Light It Up Blue, can you put it out there where it is, what time it is for the general public to be able to hear? So, everybody's aware.
Yeah, we can get that flyer that the LACES gave us and we can post that on the website, Greg. We can, and it's on our front door at school. I know it's on my front door at my office, too.
I'll get it up in the morning.
They've hung the flyers up a lot of places around town, so.
Okay, okay. Any kind of information we can get of?
We can do that.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Anything further? All right, thank you. Counselor?
Mayor Commissioners, just two quick things. I've got some input for the road use agreement with Next Era. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those now or when we get to that stage. Second is a number of months ago, this New Mexico Housing Authority was here and they were discussing a few things with the city. Part of what they were talking about was a transition, which had already been put in place from an entity that, it's an LLC that was the City of Lovington Housing Authority, which is no longer in existence. They provided us with some warranty deeds and one of those to sign. We were not able to do that, but I think we've got something worked out on some quick warranties. So, that'll be an action item in the not-too-distant future and be able to give you a little bit more information about that. I know some of the concern was what was going to happen to those houses and the property over by the high school if, if and when we did that and then also what was going to occur with other locations, other apartments and some projects there. So, hopefully, we can get some better information from them, have them re-attend and have some questions lined up for them. Other than that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you have.
All right. Commissioners?
There ain't nothing.
There ain't nothing, huh? We'll just wait till later. Thank you. All right. Brings us to our public comment time. We appreciate you being here. If you have something you would like to address to the commission, we ask that you come forward to the podium. Please state your name or you'll be stopped in the middle of your spiel before you get started. And let us know what you want us to hear. Podium's open. Try to keep it three minutes or so or less. Oh, he's going the opposite way. I see no one moving, so I guess we'll...
We'll give him three more seconds.
Okay.
We're done.
We're done. Oh, hey, man, Jeff's moving.
I'll just give him your hard time.
Oh, okay. Sounds good. All right, brings us to our non-action items. Discussion of the CTSI services.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I'm going to have Kevin Mayhous introduce our newest IT services provider recently engaged with the city. Kind of walk us through how we got here and how they've been so far.
Well, sorry, Mayor Commissioners. Just wanted to give a quick introduction to the CTSI. Unfortunately, I can't remember off the top of my head what it stands for because it's a long acronym. But I think it was originally introduced to Tristan who just kind of came here and we met last year sometime in the fall, early fall, I think. But we finally got around to listening to their offer and David and I decided that would be the best thing for the city to hire CTSI because of our size and the, what do I want to say? The lack of infrastructure and care that has unfortunately gone by within the city. Thankfully, CTSI has a lot more manpower than I, than simply I, so they're a huge help to our city currently. Even we are right now nearing our 60-day period with them and they've already come in to be a huge help. They're based out of Loveville, Texas, and I'll let them introduce their company a little bit more. But they've all already been super helpful in helping us deal with some infected computers and devices. So, they've been a huge help to us. So, I'd like to let them introduce themselves here just so they're a little better than us.
Good evening, the Mayor Commissioners. I'm Tristan Davis. I'm a technology consultant at CTSI. And this is Bailey Franks. She is our technology strategy analyst. A little bit about CTSI. We're a managed IT service provider focused on cybersecurity. We've been in business for 40 years. And like Kevin said, we're based out of Loveville, Texas. As far as what we're doing for the city, we're helping with the day-to-day managed IT support, which alleviates a lot of stress off Kevin, as well as managed IT cybersecurity and then manage backups and disaster recovery. So, like Kevin mentioned, we've rolled out all of our cybersecurity tools and those tools have already seen, given us a lot of significant data. So, there's reports that I will be going over with, me and Bailey will be going over with David and Kevin just talking about, and I'm happy to present those to the city as well at the city council meetings. But I will just specify with the data that's on those things, I'll probably be vague in these meetings just for the security of the city. So, I wanted to just introduce ourselves, what we do, and see if there's any questions that you guys have for us.
All right. We've already gotten a couple of various teachers' emails asking for money and very clever. They'll put my name on at the city logo. I mean, they have all our information. So, you know, and they flag that immediately, say, so far, so good. And we've tried different vendors over the years and given them a try. It's been promising so far.
I think the promising thing about CTSI is that they, like I said earlier, they have a lot of manpower, a lot of knowledge and technology to be able to help even from Loveville, Texas, from lovely. So, they've been a huge help to me and a lot of the things that I do. So, I've been free to spend some of my time.
Some of the, I also forgot to mention, like I said, we've been in business for 40 years, but as far as supporting local governments, we've been doing that for about 20 years. So, we support around 20 Texas counties and then a handful of Texas cities as well. So, we haven't, we've been supporting clients in, I guess, New Mexico for a long time as well. Pettigrew and Associates is one of those. I heard you mention them. So, I also didn't mention, part of Bailey's role is helping, I'll let her kind of explain. She likes to explain what she does, but...
So, y'all have a lot of tools rolled out and most of those tools come with a report that is sometimes, sometimes hard to understand or just a lot of information thrown in. So, my job is to help y'all make proactive decisions. So, prior to those meetings that Tristan will have is I go through and run those reports and analyze them to help y'all make the best decisions you can and hopefully the most proactive decisions you can. And I also help build a budget report for you. So, once again, through making proactive decisions, sometimes things happen, but we like to be as prepared as possible and help you be prepared as possible as well.
The best thing you can do with technology is be proactive and that way you're not replacing all of your equipment all at once. This is a big capital expense. Nobody likes that. So, we try to help be proactive on those things and that minimizes your IT spend throughout the year.
So, any questions?
Go ahead, question again.
When you say tools?
Yes.
Explain that, because I am not IT guy.
Yeah.
Me had big hammer, me swing hard. So, explain, explain like some of the tools or what their functions are, because, I mean, you're talking French to me here, so I don't...
No, absolutely. That's a great question. One of the primary tools we have is an endpoint protection, which we call that EDR for short, which is endpoint protection response. That is back in however many years ago, 20-plus years ago, you used to just get a machine, you throw antivirus on it and good to go. With the way cybersecurity's changed nowadays, can't do that. But this is basically the next generation of that antivirus. Why we call it endpoint protection response is if a device were to get infected, that tool will remove that device from the network before it can spread and affect anything else. So, that's just kind of the baseline. Like David mentioned, we have an email filter tool and that filters out as much of the junk as it can. There's some other tools we have for email that we're currently talking with them about. And then there's really the primary cybersecurity tool. I would say we have an offensive one. So, a lot of cybersecurity tools are defensive and this one's offensive. And what Kevin was referring to was this specific tool that caught it. But it actively scans your network for malicious attachments or things that hide in your network. Ransomware and malware like to hide in your network and learn where it can do the most damage. And then, once it's learned that, then that's when it attacks so that it can make the most money. So, this tool is actively seeking those things out. And same thing, if it finds something, it'll remove a device from the network before it spreads and affects. So, that's kind of a baseline of some of the cybersecurity tools that help. I'm trying to keep it not technical.
No, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Tristan, can you speak a little bit about the disaster recovery component in your services?
Yes. So, the disaster recovery solution we have is an onsite backup, but it also does a cloud backup. So, the way you, kind of the industry standard for backup solutions is you have your production data on your servers, then you have an onsite backup of that data, and then you have that replicated to the cloud. We have that encrypted across all ways, which is how it should be. But what's really cool about this device is if, let's say you had an isolated fire in your server room and the servers were down and that backup solution was down, all we would need is to get an internet connection set up and we could run everything virtually in the cloud with all of your servers and the city wouldn't have any downtime. So, this specific disaster recovery tool is truly built to minimize downtime and everybody knows that if you have downtime, you're losing money. So, that's what that backup solution does. It's not just a, just a copy of your data. It's truly a business continuity solution. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you happen to have any literature as far as what you're providing or what you can provide? And I can, what can we do to deal with cybersecurity every day? So, I'd like to see what you guys are offering, what you have.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Happy to provide any of that. If I can, him or you or whoever, any information you guys need.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
David, do we currently operate on LAN?
Yep.
Do we operate on LAN?
Do we operate on LAN here?
Yes.
We do, okay. I don't have a site, or you know, whatever, so I didn't know. All right. Do you also do social engineering, testing, and maybe some training?
That's a great question. So, that is, she loves these reports.
I live in these reports. I live in the dashboard of these reports. I'm analyzing them every day, seeing what trends we have. So, we have, my favorite tool is our cybersecurity awareness training tool. Not only does it do an annual test, it does macro trainings every week or every other week, depending on the length of them. We also send simulated phishing tests. So, we can monitor who's clicking on those links. If you do click on those links, it takes you directly to a phishing training. And then we also have reporting that shows who's clicking on those links, who's clicking on what links. Because we run campaigns and in these campaigns, every phishing test is different. So, you can't say, oh, we on the lookout for this one. They all look different. And then we also monitor the dark web. So, we look for any email compromises, passwords, demographics, anything linked to your email address. If it's on the dark web, we're watching and we can see that. And we run that. Every six months, we get updated dark web scan for that.
So, you do phishing, smishing, and phishing?
All of them.
Okay, external and internal pen test?
So, that's not included in what we do, but yes, we do provide...
You can do it, yes. I'm not saying, yeah, you do it, yeah.
Yeah. We have a, we actually have a sister company. It's a truly independent third-party, which we prefer to do that because then that also audits us to make sure that we're doing what we can to keep the city protected. So, and those reports are very in-depth and I've seen some reports from ones that we, clients that we've had, had that done and it's incredible the things that they can find. Things that you wouldn't expect.
I've learned a lot in the past couple of years, so.
Yeah.
I'm responsible for our bank's auditing of all of that, so.
You understand?
I do. I'm amazed at what they can do with, and we had, I mean, the problem is truly the upper management is some of the biggest problems that we had because one of our favorite, this was several years ago, was you got a free subway. I swear, all of the management clicked on the free subway. So, yeah, anyway.
That's pretty funny. Yeah, well, and it's, it truly does change every day. Like, people kind of laugh at us when we say that. You know, like, it changes every day.
Yeah. Everybody here has probably clicked on the UPS. You know, I mean, your package is hung up somewhere. Oh.
Yeah. I don't know. So, there was recently, the most recent kind of cyber attack right now is, some of you may have gotten it. I know I've got a couple, is like getting text messages that you have unpaid tolls.
Yes. Got one two days ago.
Yep. So, that's the recent... Yep, so that's the recent one right now, so for anybody who did not know, that is not true, so.
How we could get into that cycle with a toll road in Lovington.
Well, right, exactly.
We have one, we're just paying for it.
That's true. That's a different toll.
They're proactive. They know you're gonna not pay it whenever we have a toll road, so. All right, any questions, any further questions? Sorry. Well, thank you, now it's, sounds good.
Thank you, appreciate you guys having us.
I appreciate it. All right, anything further? Mr. Miranda, anything further?
Commissioners, just wanted to bring you up to date on federal support progress. These are the latest schematics supplied by Jeff Stewart from Penn Collaborative. We'll go to the next slide. Actually, go to the third one first. So this is to show you what the effects of getting the county funding allows us to do and incorporate Phase Two into Phase One. So you've seen all of the grayed-out area in the center, that's Phase One. But with a million dollars from the county, we've been able to incorporate Phase Two, which is sidewalks, head-in parking, and these bumpouts around the perimeter that you see. So that's just kind of to give you, for instance, these are the streetlights that will go in. That's to kind of give you an idea of what will be completed by September. And this will be the finished look of the project without the detail inside. The real reason we're coming to you today is we're presenting before the County Commission on Thursday as well, but Jeff has given the two entities, yourself and the county, three options for the main sign, which will be right here, which is where the current billboard is, right, going down central. And just to get your input on this sign, if we can go back to the second slide. So this is from Jeff. These are three potential signs and just kind of looking for your input, thoughts.
You realize the last time he did a sign input, it was a fiasco, so...
Right, we want to be finished by September of this year, so.
Well, we better get this started now then, so, you're right.
So, and we're presenting before the county on Thursday, so. Just your thoughts and ideas, I mean, we can go back and tell more. And they are working on the site. The electrical conduit has already been installed and covered back up as of today, so I think the next stop is the irrigation systems.
What do you think, Commissioner Gane?
I was trying to keep my glasses and I was looking over here. I was actually leaning from this distance for number one.
A, it's actually A this time, so.
A. Number eight.
Number eight? Okay.
Number eight. Which is number eight.
Y'all are welcome, everybody's welcome to throw in. So you've got some votes for A so far.
The last time we talked about number A, we were saying that it could be a possible step for a jump.
For kids, yeah. We went with option B.
So we went with option B.
Well, it was a multi-purpose though, see?
This guy's getting old, so he's telling us...
This guy's getting old.
He's picking up a bicycle there. I'm grinding the pavement.
That's a good point, I had forgotten about that.
I'll remove it.
While moving.
We presented this at the Parks and Rec meeting as well.
Just a second.
It's like a cemetery sign.
I mean, we don't need a decision tonight, but just wanted to present it to you, give you an update of where we are. It's progressing well and we're excited.
Sounds like a cemetery sign.
Well, I will be agreeable with whatever you choose.
Well, you got two As and two Bs, so you're in the middle.
Either way, your choice.
I'll save to tell the county...
I like C too.
A and B and possibly C.
Yeah.
You got all the bases covered.
That's right.
Okay. I don't like B at all, it looks like a cemetery sign.
You don't like A at all?
B.
Oh, B at all?
I don't, I don't like it. Like you just cook the fence onto the end of it and you got your cemetery.
It's all nice and beholden.
That's right. All right, anything further on that?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your update. All right, brings us to you, sorry, adding you back up to the top. The Squire subdivision, Mr. Miranda.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Daniel John Cox of Youngs Homes came into the office a couple weeks ago and he had kind of a new spin, so to speak, on his proposed development, so I said, "Please present before the commission and explain it better than I can." Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, city leadership, we appreciate you guys letting us come here tonight. Can I pass these to the Commissioners?
Sure, absolutely.
Just a little information, real quick.
And I've got others, if somebody else wants to. You have one, I've got one, but... You know, we're just here, we're trying to provide some affordable housing here in Lovington, New Mexico. We've been working on this project for a long time. Just, just to start out, you know, basically, we submitted our subdivision application to the state of New Mexico because we're in the county and they gave us a denial. And they gave us a denial based on water availability, okay? This, this wouldn't be an issue in the past, you know, if you were going to hook up to city water, it just, it just an automatic. And there's a new, there's a new procedure at the Office of the State Engineer where they require a hydrology study and the hydrologist that does this study in Lee County, in Hobbs and in Lovington, says that we don't have enough water to last for 40 years, okay? So I've put together just a few things for you guys to take a look at. I put the location map of the Squire subdivision, a flat map of what the Squire subdivision would look like. I included the resolution where the city approved of the city water usage in the ETZ. And then I also included the Office of the State Engineer's negative opinion as it pertains to the city of Lovington's ability to provide water in the next 40 years, which, you know, isn't correct in my opinion, but in addition to that, I included a positive opinion as it pertains to the same type of subdivision in the city of Hobbs, New Mexico. And the reason that it was approved, because they gave us the same stipulations as they gave us here. But the reason why that subdivision was approved is because I submitted it in 2021, okay, prematurely. But they approved it because it had been submitted in 2021 and I included that opinion with this, so you could read it. And in addition to that, I included a fiscal impact report on a subdivision that we did in North Hobbs in 2013. And, and one of the sentences in that decision from the U.S. Geological Survey of the Ovaloa Aquifer in 2009 stated that we have downed 75 years of water at the bare minimum. And so my question is, you know, do we think that we have enough water to last for 40 years? I say, "Yeah, we do. We got, we got ample water to last well over 40 years, 100 years, in my opinion." And so we're asking the city to consider a hybrid for the Squire subdivision, okay? And the only, the only way that we can bring 40 homes to the city of Lovington on that property is if the city would consider annexing that property and then allowing us to do a county-spec subdivision with city water and septic tanks. That's, that's what we were going to do when we got it approved back in 2022, but they denied it and we've been working through all these problems for these years trying to get this done. And so that's, that's what we're asking you to consider. We're doing the same type of a subdivision in Hobbs and because of other issues, there is city water and city sewer being put on that subdivision, but it's being, the city sewer, lift station and all that's being paid for through the county to the city and then provided to that subdivision. I know this is out of the ordinary to do a land, to bring the land into the city limits and then, and then allowing a county-spec subdivision to be done, but to keep it affordable, we have to do chip seal roads, you know, we can't do asphalt, streets, curves, gutters, sidewalks and driveways, yeah. So we're presenting it to you. I know you may have a lot of questions. I probably should have sent this to the city manager to maybe put up on the TV for people to see, but this is what we're, this is what we're trying to do. We're just still trying to do the same thing, but for us to beat the system, because I believe this is a, an error on the, on the side of the state, that they're preventing organic growth. You've always been able to put a house, a water, water, water well and a septic tank on acre land, and you can still do that, you know? If it's grandpa's land and he's cutting down an acre or two, you know, for grandson to live on, but, but we can't do it because it's over 10 lots, less than two acres in size. We can still bring houses to Lovington on this property, but instead of 40, we would have to be scaled back to 20. So this is an opportunity for the, for the city to consider, you know, doubling the size of the subdivision. And yes, it will help us, but it will also help Lovington and it is an affordable housing product. We've been approved with MFA Housing New Mexico because our product meets the guidelines of affordable housing in, in the Hobbs area. And so this is, this is what we're trying to do. I know, I know there's no decisions that are going to be made tonight, but I stand for any questions that you may have. That's what we're going to try to do.
Questions?
Crystal.
Yeah.
Stupid question time. So hypothetical, is there somewhere in, I know that when we talked about this previously, we have to bring everything curb, street, blah, 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 blah. Is there anything that says at a later date that can be done?
No.
It has to be done right then?
It's supposed to be done during construction of each individual property. Does the sidewalks, the road, has to be, road and infrastructure is supposed to be put in prior to the sale of any lot?
But I'm just saying, like, if the, like, we were to annex in, let's just pretend we grew north up to the miserable part where the county's got everything all screwed up, you know, north of Gum Street up there? And we just, for whatever, we had a large growth that way and we annexed in that for whatever reason, for water issues, we'll say. And then are they going to have to put streets and gutters at, at the city? How's that, how are we going to work that, that magic to make that work?
Well, so that's the issue when you annexing properties, you have to look at what that growth is going to be and you have to do the consideration of that. The way our ordinance is written right now, it's pretty black and white. You make a subdivision, you're supposed to develop it. Of course, we have several subdivisions that have never been built up that exist currently. The Null Edition is a perfect example of that. Of 17th and Jefferson.
Yep.
The Null Edition, it has five houses in it and it was a subdivision that's supposed to have 50 something homes in it, but the roads were never done and the rest of the infrastructure was never put in. So, you know, you worry about something like that when you annexing a property and you make a subdivision, that if they only build one or two of the homes, then you're left with that and now other people that want to come in, they have to build their own part of the road to get to where they want to build a house. So looking to try to get a developer to come in and finish off that area has been hard. We had a, we did have a, an apartment complex that wanted to try to go in and do something, but the neighbors were not for it, so that was shot down and that developer left and went elsewhere. So I mean, it's just, it really matters on you guys' opinion and how you want to write this. You can write them, you know, you can do a variance for it or a conditional subdivision record law and you can, you can make your terms. I mean, that is, you guys can do that, that is up to you guys.
Wherever, where, where there ever be a point that will we be, excuse me, we will be responsible for putting...
So when you annex in something and they make a subdivision and they dedicate the roads to you, then those roads and those sidewalks and those curves that aren't here become our responsibility to do the putting.
Yep, that's what I was thinking.
So if we only have a chipso road, when I go to do an update, I have to put curb, gutter and sidewalk to do ADA compliance, because that is one of our comprehensive issues, is we are to bring in more ADA compliance into our town. That's our ADA transition plan we passed, right? So that is something we have to look at, then we have to eventually get those in. And yeah, it would be on us once those roads are dedicated to us.
Is a lot of that ADA funding, is it from the feds or from, I mean, or do we have to pay for it ourselves?
The ADA, so...
I mean, I know when you're doing initially, you have to do that.
Yeah.
If you're doing a city subdivision. If you're doing a county subdivision, then, then we're going to do Unit 1 and it's going to have everything done. I mean, nobody's going to be stuck with not having a developed lot to put a house on.
So I know that's why we have the funding through the EDC where we have some money is to help reimburse some of that cost for those, for that infrastructure that you have to put in for a home. And then that's open and we have quite a good, nobody's even took any claim on any of those funds yet, so that is still available to help absorb some of that cost. There are grants that you could probably get as a developer. I know me as the city, I run for grants constantly. You know, you don't, you don't get them all, but you get as many as you can. That is our, my Jackson Street project, it's an ADA improvement project because they were missing sidewalks, ADA reps in a lot of that area.
No, it's not two, but there are areas.
It takes a while to design a project to get the grant.
It depends on perpilation and water flow and everything else.
Okay, I'm, here, I have another question. Well, Mr. John Cox, and you and I had a discussion afterwards, and so I'm going to ask our planning and zoning. All right, in the city of Lovington, what is our current code on septic tanks?
So you can have a septic tank if you have the proper amount of land to have it state-certified.
Okay, in the, inside the city limits? Okay. Because as I explained...
The main reason we don't have is because you don't, most people don't have the appropriate land to have the septic and the leach line.
Right.
They don't have the, the landmass they need for that. And so it can't be certified through the state engineer and therefore you can't have it. So it's not just, it's not a city thing. It's mainly if you can't get it certified by the state is where you can't have it.
My opposition was not tying to our current sewer, which if you, if you tie to city sewer, then your lot size can be considerably less, which allows a more root... Give us, give me a quick rundown on your cost analysis there versus the way you're proposing.
Well, I mean, we've, we've tried to do city-spec subdivisions with streets, curves, gutters, sidewalks, driveways, and our customer doesn't want that. Our customer wants an acre land, that's what our customer wants. I mean, you'd see, you'd see subdivisions here if, if that was a viable option. City subdivisions with manufactured homes, if that was a viable option, it just isn't an option. We've done it, we've tried it, you know, we've had the back out. Our customer wants an acre land, that's just, that's who our buyer is. You know, this is a blue collar and this is a very, not a very dense subdivision, it's acreage, acreage is what it is, so. We've gone through that cost and it's just trying to keep it affordable for the buyer and they want to buy an acre land, that's what our buyer wants. So that's what we're trying to provide to them.
So what's the negative of the city providing water and sewer to residents outside of the city limits?
Well, if you annexed in, we'd have customers for what? It's just a question of who's going to...
But if what if we didn't annex it?
Then he's in the same boat he's currently in. He's dependent on the state, yes.
The state is holding up this water, even though it's for us.
And the change now is we do water and sewer. The change now is we do water and sewer.
Well, we'd like to, we'd like to do septic tanks. We'd like to do septic tanks, because we have plenty of land to do that and, and if you, if you, you know, there's two things that come with city sewer, I mean, that's probably a lift station, I would assume, and, and then we have to do all the infrastructure, all the infrastructure before we sell the lot. The reason why we've done so good at building subdivisions typically in the past is that we, all we have to do is put in the roads and the electrical backbone and then as we sell property, we build water well septic tank, you know, water well septic tank instead of doing all those, you know, thousands and tens of thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of infrastructure upfront.
Can you explain to everyone why your new plan...
Can you explain to everyone why your new plan, you wouldn't maybe run afoul of the OSC in terms of shutting it down, not approving it or approving it?
What's the question yet?
Well, the old plan, the office of the state engineer tonight, because of their contention that the water level is dropping, how would this avoid that?
This would avoid that because we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have to provide any of our information to the state for the subdivision, because it's in the city.
Be inside the city.
If it's in the city limits, somebody can go buy a plot of land in the city and do a development, they don't have to get their opinion. And for some reason or another, I do not know why, but they've got these, they've got these caveats and these little catch, catches in the development program that's preventing organic growth in the county. So anything over 10 lots that's less than two acres, that can't go through, the commission can't approve a final plat. They can approve a preliminary plat, but they cannot approve a final plat.
Is that considered a flood zone right there, or anything? I just don't want us to be responsible for something. If we annex in, is it flood zone, or even...
That's an unmapped area.
Unmapped area, okay.
And a subdivision doesn't have to have a map, they don't have to pay for that study to map that area until they're five acres or 50 lots, and that's where it hits that marker, and then you have to do a study of, if you're in a special housing area.
So the next question would be, is, are they only selling one lot, or does the customer have an option for multiple lots? Because with multiple lots, that comes with multiple problems.
No, we sell one lot for a house. And no trucking companies, this is our residential.
Well, that doesn't seem to, that thought pattern doesn't seem to apply to some people, so that's why I was just making sure that, you know, there wasn't really an option to multiply your lots, and now I have this, I'm basically, you know, in this area of gray, so...
Yeah, these are specified residential lots, and we've even, I mean, we've even personally, the company has gone after people that have broken the covenants. We know that the neighbors have to sue the people that are breaking the covenants. So we've taken, you know, the initiative in those instances, we've had one get away with it, and that's it. You know, it's not an easy, it's not an easy thing to consider, but it is very similar to the one that we're doing in Hobbs. We're doing 235 lots in Hobbs. And, you know, this could be done, but this is the only way it could be done, because of this issue that we're having with the state engineer, and they've said the same thing about the city of Hobbs. And I've got it in this packet, that approval from them, and it specifically states in there that because we submitted that subdivision back in 2021, that they're not going to change the positive opinion that we had then with this new regulation they have inside the OSC. So that's kind of the meat of my argument. You know, what we're trying to do is beat the bureaucracy, if you will, okay? I mean, we're just, we're just making an imaginary line, which is the city limits, but the city has stipulations on their, on their development requirements, and a one-acre lot with a big old cement sidewalk out front, it just isn't gonna, isn't gonna work. But I understand what your density question is, and it just hasn't worked for us in the past, right?
Next step, have you talked to Evelyn with the EDC and gotten into any of the housing incentives that we are currently producing and see what you would qualify for?
We, in Hobbs, we will qualify for development funds for all the linear footage of water and sewer that we put in the ground. Yes.
With my experience, you know, a PUD, which is a, oh, good grief, I think I remember, a, not prepared, but urban development, it's a, anyway, an acronym, I hate acronyms anyway. Basically, you put together a game plan and then make a proposal to a city to accept exceptions to that, to their ordinary covenants, whatever, and that's what you, I mean, effectively, that's what you're asking, is that for this particular piece of land, it would fall under the guidelines at which you specify. Then you would get, pass that through Crystal or whatever, and then it would come before the commission if, would it have to go through planning and zoning? Okay. So that's the way that I've had to do it in the past. I would say that would be the way I would tell you to, just because it's going to have to go through those steps anyway. Now, I have no idea, you know, it depends on when it comes through as to how the commission's going to feel either way, I mean, it's not a guarantee, but...
Sure. Well, we need leadership to, I mean, if leadership's behind it, then I think that we could get it done. I mean, if leadership doesn't like it, and you might not, and I understand that, you know, it's something you have to make, you know, make a kind of a decision on. For us to go to planning and zoning, if they know you guys are behind it, then don't they have to move it through?
Like I said, I hate the septic tank idea, but, I mean, if we were talking about city sewer, I could probably overlook some of the other stipulations, but I'm one person, and I don't want my view to be, you know, influencing anybody, because I'm just one vote.
Well, a city sewer isn't out of the question.
Okay.
It is out of the question if we have to pay for a $500,000 lift station. Now, you know, the county gave the city of Hobbs funds for housing development. Part of those monies was for our development, up to $750,000 for the development of our lift station and the infrastructure to the city maker, so...
Well, and that's where I stand, they have the, the EDC has that program now with the development of housing, and it's, it's based on the square footage of the houses that are sold, and each one, as they're put up and get a certificate of occupancy, then you can receive some funds back.
Evelyn, can you tell us?
Evelyn's right back here.
Yeah, Evelyn, can you tell us what it is on mobile homes?
Yeah, manufactured homes, it's $2,500 per home, just to do, because it's a modular manufactured home. In the RFP, we did require for it to be fully developed, the lots, the fencing, we wanted a full subdivision to be fully, we didn't want it to have not fully developed, but we do have it tiered, modular homes, manufactured homes, $2,500, townhomes, apartments, $5,000, and then homes that are over $2,500 square feet are $8,000, 1,500 square foot homes are at $10,000.
1,500 and less, is that what it was?
Less, 1,500 and less, it's $10,000. That's what we're targeting.
Yeah, because that's the homes we need, absolutely smaller. And it's based off a certificate of occupancy.
Hypothetically, okay, he puts together a PUD, and it were to pass city commission, would you be able to still offer, because it wouldn't, obviously, it wouldn't have all of the specifications that, but if it was a city commission-approved development, would it qualify for those awards?
There's a due diligence committee that would make that determination. I couldn't tell you it personally, but a due diligence committee would look it over, I mean, but if they had the city's blessing, I'm sure they would take that into consideration if you're approving it, you're allowing to bypass certain stuff.
Okay. Just trying to get all the avenues that are out there.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anything further from the commission? I don't, I don't even know what to tell you what the next step was, but we, I would say, give us, give us something, or whatever, and...
I want you to say, "Hell, yeah."
Hell, yeah. Put sanitary sewers in, I promise y'all get a lot closer to it.
Okay, would the, would the city, would the city, I mean, I don't know exactly how the city of Hobbs did it, but would the city of Lovington be, be willing to go to the county and, if there was a lift station required, I don't even know if there would be?
Yeah, there would be. I'm pretty sure, Robert, do you have a?
There would be.
I, I don't even know where you would tie in out there, because that's what, to this point, that's the reason the Knoll division hasn't gone in, because I looked at that property at least a dozen times, and the lift station that was, that was platted in there and set aside in the easement was never installed because there wasn't a good tie-on spot, and so I don't even know where out there we would even be able to tie.
Fire station's the closest thing.
Yeah. And so it'd have to come under the street and all of that.
$25,000?
That's 75, but, anyway, now, again, the EDC offered some infrastructure money, you know, in agreement with all of this, and they could vote to give you, to allow some of that infrastructure money towards that. It is strictly for city infrastructure to incentivize housing, so these are avenues, and I can't speak for them, I just know that it's available. Yes, ma'am?
Just to add, I just have a question, are these homes going to be on permanent foundations?
Yeah.
Okay, because that is one of the requirements on the incentives, it has to be on permanent foundation, it has to have a concrete slab. It can't be like...
I know.
All these, yeah, qualified for FHA, VA, convention mortgage, yeah. Well, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. All right. Hang on, I'm going to keep this going. All right. Next item, discussion of proposed penalty assessment. Oh, that's right.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, the commission has mentioned for a long time that some of our, most of our ordinances and fines, penalty assessments are two-fold. A couple of weeks ago, I got together with the municipal judge, the police chief, co-enforcement, and then also Crystal by email, and we came up with some proposed across-the-board increases for the commission's consideration. The only new recommendation, which would be the creation of an ordinance designating Main Street as a no-truck thoroughfare zone from Avenue End through Deer Dome Street except for local deliveries, conspicuous signs would be posted starting at the cheese plant on the south side and Six Shooter on the north side, and we made, that truck weight maybe have to be adjusted upwards to maybe 15,000 pounds, and then a sliding scale upwards for the first, or second, and subsequent offenses. The other proposed increases that the judge agreed with were across-the-board increase to the minimum penalty assessments for traffic offenses that go through municipal court to $79. Some of these current ordinances call for fines as low as $10, and the state has done away with their $29 fee, so if we go to 79, it's going to be, in some cases, it'll be the same penalty assessment, but I'd be happy to, if you want to, you know, the police chief weighed in on this, Judge Jones, Laura, Crystal added some stuff, and then some of them addressed the real nuisance offenses, trash, loud mufflers, window tins, food trucks. So we tried to kind of attack the low-hanging fruit, that seems to come up in these meetings every time, and maybe take, make it, put a little more sting to some of these penalty assessments and start there. It's not the, it's the first step of the process, it's not the last step of the process. Judge, I don't know if you have anything to add, as police chief, Laura, Crystal, I don't know. It was a...
Come on. Just if they have any questions or anything, but when the state took away the $29, and after 23 of that dollars come back to the city for help with the jail time and stuff like that that we have, and we've lost all that, well, since I mean, the jail time has increased quite a bit, I had two in there over the weekend till I could see them this morning, get them out, so we, them expenses are just adding up in there that we have to pay for the county, so that would help out a lot if we had this, if we could get that money back. Some of it was for computer upgrades and stuff that your programs will have to have, which ours will have to be upgraded quite a bit this coming year for cameras and stuff. When the magistrate moved out, they took all that with them, but we're going to have to put it back in, because we have to do the same type of trials over online, so that'll just help settle all the finances, the rate increase, so...
Going on some of my fees. I know, so many years ago, we had raised those variance and spec reviews and reperforming to 150, and most of it was to absorb the cost of the stamps. A certified letter, which is how all these have to be mailed out, is almost $10 for each one, so if I mail out 20 to 25 letters, I've spent every bit of that 150 that it costs, so that, you know, that's why I raised, I wanted to see about raising those, and just because, you know, you don't, a lot of other cities have a very high variance fee, and it is to encourage people to not, hey, that be to try to get a variance, because if it's low, they're just going to keep coming and keep coming at it, so...
And I'll point out the loud muffler change, which I think Commissioner Tridio and I know Elaine Beadle has talked about many times, it would be $150 for the first offense, $250 for the second offense, and 500 possibly for the third offense, so we think that would have an impact. It's all subject to the discretion of the judge, of course, but it allows him the upward flexibility to really, you know, there's people that just don't care flavorably, just like, "Well, write me the $25 ticket, I'll keep my loud mufflers."
Any impound in that?
I wish.
And the tent is the same thing as the mufflers, is we constantly write the same person for tent over and over and over, and they don't do nothing about the tent. I'm talking windshield, facility tenant, the whole, the whole...
Pregnant?
Yep. So, yeah, if we step it up, we're, maybe we can get a little meat on the bone, and maybe want to take that off.
Well, this is not going to make any of us very popular for a time period, as people...
When were we popular?
Okay.
Exactly. Would you let me know when that happened, because apparently I missed that part.
There's a lot of, all the time, but, oh, popular, but in my court, and every judge kind of learns stuff, they have to learn how to address certain things. We do push a lot of community service, we're increasing that a lot more, because I know people can't afford to pay the tickets, so I do try to, try to evaluate the person that comes in and see what might be best. The really thing is to get them to change their ways, to not to do, break the laws or to do the violations, so I try to manage that by, some of them I know that they can't afford it, so we do push the community service in there. The insurance for the kids, with young kids, if the kids are doing pretty good, we, I usually, lately, I've just made all the youth do community service. I don't give them my option. This is what you're going to do to take care of this, mom and dad's not going to pay it, so I have the youth offender take care of that. And then usually we'll have a, if they do defensive driving, that gets dropped off in 60 days or 90, depends on how they sign, and that don't go on their records, so their insurance doesn't go up. Some of them are having trouble for insurance anyway for the youth, so, because the boys are freaks, kids, which is right, for whatever reason. And I don't know, my daughter had all the tickets in, well, I had all the recs too, but it's just, I don't know why, hers wouldn't hire, but it wasn't really fair with the way the insurance company works, it doesn't work that way. But I do have that discretion, and I do use that on most people, to see what they can and can't afford, so, just because we have a $500 fine, maybe I probably won't see it. Some of them that's, well, we got this 300 now, I will not charge 300 for, if you don't have your numbers on the house, it's $300 fine, if you don't have your posted numbers on the house, so, when they write it, usually I just make sure they bring me pictures of it, put it on the house.
Is that on the house or in the alley?
Well, it's on the house.
Okay.
On the house. I usually just put it on the alley for the EMS, or for the gas company or anybody, I do tell them, you know, your best bet is protect yourself, so them guys can find you quick. If they need a gas company, needs your house, they need to know which one it is, so I do have to give them a pep talk when we talk, so...
Please, no session, please.
I think, but we'll kind of, I know a lot of people that love to struggle for finances to do stuff, but, so I do kind of take that into consideration, and try to push that community service up.
It's when you get the same person over and over and over.
We have.
That's why, oh, I know you... That's why, oh, I know you, I know, I agree.
And one of them was in there for three days this weekend in jail.
Oh, well, there you go.
And that's up to about fifty-five hundred dollars on the fines, so.
She was a repeated.
Wow, okay.
We'll see.
We'll see how that works out. Well, Laurie and I are going to like you showing up now either, so.
You're going to be with us, unpopular.
Very unpopular.
I'm already unpopular.
It's an education process and that's all we're trying to do. But educate, if there is no consequence, then, you know, no substantial consequence, then they're just going to be like, the fines easier.
Most of the fines are going to be back to what they was last year.
Right.
And we had to knock the twenty-nine hundred dollars off the state to, we, we, we'll just get it. Most of the counties and all the cities around, they increased it back to the twenty-nine or they sent them with fifty dollars of citation. So they adjusted up.
All right. Any further discussion, questions?
So the commission's okay with it, I can come back in a couple of meetings with these penalty assessments, excuse me, with the new rates, and I can draft a no-truck thoroughfare zone for your consideration for the, so we don't have trucks on the historic.
Can we force that if we don't have a different truck route though?
That's, I don't know. I mean, we have, we can, we can have the signage, NMDOT basically said we can put signage on it, you know, but it is considered a truck route now.
The, the DOT has the truck route.
We need to make a better signage.
Their signage there is just, some of it's not big enough, some of it's real old, maybe outdated.
Maybe you need a little more of it instead of like the county does. C one!
Yep.
Miss that one.
So, yeah. Maybe it's just me.
But we're just talking about the historical downtown area.
Right.
No, Avenue D and all the way to Deer Duff, it's all Lane Street except, we basically tried to.
That has the truck.
Yes, the truck stopped there, we had to kind of leave that.
That's a deal.
Okay, so.
So then you get guys there and then go and then back up to the truck.
So you're, you're also eliminating from, eliminating from Avenue D all the way to R, is that what you're saying also for Main or just the?
No, on the north side, it's a question of whether you want to make it Deer Duff or Jackson because you do have, I don't know what the Wal-Mart Sea Store is going to be for trucks, for having trucks. I don't think so, right?
The what?
The Wal-Mart Sea Store is going to have.
Albertson's Sea Store?
I mean.
They'll have, I've already, they'll have plenty of access.
I mean, they'll have decent, but they're not going to have truck access, it's not going to be large parking, truck fuel stations.
So we save it for.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I haven't yet.
Okay, from, from Deer Duff to Avenue N.
On Main Street.
On Main Street only.
So from, by the hospital in Deer Duff, all the way to Avenue D, or Avenue N.
Yeah.
I, I, before we get to.
I would put K because it goes to commercial. And once they get to N, they can't, they don't have anywhere to go.
Well, the only reason we're giving them the end is to get to that fueling station which they didn't come out of.
And then go back out.
Yeah. We need to come up with, even for city deliveries, we need some sort of a route, take, you know, use this road, in that way we at least have an idea of what roads we are going to be maintaining on a regular basis. I mean, you know, this is, there's a lot to it, to do it, and yes, I'm all in favor because like I said, we have waited four years for Main Street to be, and it doesn't matter whether you go south or north, Main Street to be done, if we continue to allow it to happen, we're going to be doing this every ten, fifteen years, it's always going to be under construction, so. What's that?
Always under construction.
Always under construction, all right. Any further comments? All right. Thank you all, appreciate it. All right. All right, I guess we are to the public hearing? Sorry, let me make sure, okay, yeah, public hearing, ordinance six oh nine.
Right, we're going to have to call a public hearing in this room.
Should we advertise that in the paper?
Oh, that's a question.
Tell us about it.
All right. Are you able to?
Yeah. It might be.
I'm going to add one to this. I was told we didn't, just to advertise.
You need to advertise a question?
We did.
You would, yeah.
We did advertise.
And so now?
Well, we have to call a public hearing because it involves an ordinance. But I can.
We just have to, if anyone, basically your call up, if anyone has anything to say on this, then you're going to have to give them time at the podium and they would be able to comment.
Can I, do you want me to give an overview first or wait until we have public comment?
Really, it doesn't matter to me, I mean, a lot of it is. Go ahead.
Well, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, if you remember a little over a year ago, to help support the roadway improvements that were mandated by NMDOT for the North Main Economic Development, which included several large retailers and other features, we took five hundred thousand dollars out of our roadway funds, taxation roadway funds through the gas tax, and we set up an arrangement through a PPA with the EDC, not to use LITA funds, but to use municipal gas tax funds, which were put into an SPRO account, which would reimburse upon a certificate of occupancy, would reimburse one of the largest developers who's, they're fronting the cost upfront. And it would have an expiration date on that PPA through ordinance, this one would be six zero nine, of March first, 2026. So the, the Albertsons is not done March first, 2026, the city closed back the money. So they went out for bid and Ramirez and Sons had five hundred and five thousand dollars, and that was over a year ago, almost a year and a half ago.
Almost.
Almost two years. They were by far the lowest bidder, so the city, this commission elected to put half million dollars in roadway tax funds into that SPRO account where it remains today. As we've all seen, the project has gotten going. However, just, I think in January, the Ramirez and Sons came back and said, you know, it's been a year and a half since we bid that project, and not just the construction costs, but the state mandated wages have gone up so high that their new cost was five hundred and seventy-one thousand. Albertson's offered to split that with the city. And I would note that the, at the time, the second best bid came in above that amount, so I don't know what that second best bidder will come in today. So basically what it boils down to is there are currently monies in that municipal gasoline tax fund. The city's end of this additional funding for roadway improvements to support economic development, it would be thirty-three thousand. I put into the PPA that it would not exceed this thirty-three thousand in fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six, so no one could come back to the city to ask for more money. It would go into the same SPRO account with the same termination date of March sixth, 2026, if that supermarket is not built, the entire five hundred and thirty-three thousand would revert back to that state gasoline tax revenue fund. Evelyn and Crystal, if I misspoke, please correct me, but.
You're good.
We didn't, we didn't go to the city for approval to advertise because this had been advertised before, but it has been advertised for the proper time period and.
It's been in the newspaper since March the fourth. And on the website.
So I'm told there's about seventy thousand in that gasoline tax fund, so they can easily support this. It, it goes through the EDC, but it's not paid out of LITA funds, it's paid out of their checking account. It kind of flows from the city gasoline tax fund to the SPRO account to the EDC checking account, and then it reimburses the developer.
All right.
So this particular portion of the project is that access room off of Inandia off the highway? That had to be done to get the access off the highway.
Patrick, anything you want to add to this? We don't do a lot of public hearings, so.
No, so I think the easiest thing is just to open up this portion of the meeting that we normally do, that's, that's going to be the part of the public hearing on this particular issue. I think the easiest way to look at it is we've already gone through and analyzed it. Simplest way to say this cost have gone up, this is the most efficient way to address that increase in cost. There's still the same terms and conditions as far as, we're not, we're not obligated to pay until they get an occupancy permit at, at Albertson's. So pretty straightforward, but we need to open up this portion for a public hearing. We've already discussed what the, what the issues are, take input from the public if we have any.
Right.
Note that either we do have comments by the public and what those comments are, or that we don't have any public participation, close the meeting, that finishes our portion of the public hearing and then discussion, and then this is later on in the meeting is an action.
Okay.
So at this time, we'd like to open up for public, public comments for the organ six oh nine. Do we have any comments from our audience or from our online?
I see no one.
Give it sixty seconds.
Sixty whole seconds?
That was somewhere on the computer or something like.
Well, I was going to say, somebody needs to be monitoring, somebody.
Oh, that's, she's someone that cared.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah, let's, let's go through the public comment and then we're going to go to discussion.
Right.
Okay, so, the public comments, close the floor for, for comments.
Okay, so the floor, all right. I would make sure you note that no public comment was entertained. All right, Commissioner Ball, your discussion.
Yes, on this ordinance six oh nine, section two, I would like Patrick to explain the repealer being laban's term.
Well, I didn't have any input on the actual drafting, but take a look at it, so I got it right here. So what it says, the actual language, so that we have it in the record, it says, "All ordinances or parts of ordinances or provisions of the City of Leavitton Code in conflict or inconsistent here with be, and the same hereby are repealed to the extent only of such conflict or inconsistency." So if there was some other ordinance that's out there, and normally when you come back in and amend an ordinance, you're amending it for, let's say, certain parts, and you're looking to find things out there that would be inconsistent, that may not be brought to everybody's attention, but I think that's the primary reason, is to take a look and say, whatever we're, we're doing here today, this is what we're going to address, and the main thing that we're addressing is the increase in funds. I don't anticipate that there would be some other ordinance out there that would be separate apart from what we passed on the initial five hundred, somewhere right around there. But that's generally why you see the repealer in there. So where you see it in most instances would be on if we made adjustments to mandatory minimum fees, there could be something out there that we don't discuss, but that addresses, it could be a change in our code, it could be in a change in some other part of our ordinances, because a lot of the ordinances still on the books date back to the forties and fifties, and so they're, they're pretty antiquated. So the fact that we don't use them on a regular basis, there may be one hiding out there that, that we're not always aware of, and that, that's what that's generally designed to address. I think here it's just a safety measure to make sure there's not anything else that's out there. It's generally something that's attached, you know, a repealer, because that's part of the form that we use. So in this instance, I don't think it really has an effect, because all we're really doing is increasing that, that thirty-three to the five hundred you were taking.
Okay, because it seemed, the way it was worded, kind of odd.
Well, I think if you take a look at just that paragraph, it, it may raise some issues, but I think when you take into consideration what the discussion was, sort of start to finish on this arrangement, you know, kind of makes sense.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I guess we will close this public hearing.
All right.
I think we just list the time that it was closed, I know you can go back and take a look at the record, but I think that's.
Closing at seven ten.
Okay.
And there's still the same discussion, you know, everything else is, that can take place, so it's not like we were just limited to this particular part.
Right, yeah, we'll have, on the action item, there'll be a discussion time, yes, all right. All right. This brings us to our action item. We like action, that's right. Right into it.
Sir, let's just jump up into this one again. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for ordinance six oh nine, PPA for additional funds of thirty-three thousand for Highway eighty-two project.
Okay, I have a motion. Second for consideration of this ordinance, discussion. Anything for?
More money.
I mean, I know that there's been, you know, we've talked about it a lot, was it a year and a half ago? That was how long it was? You know, we said that we would limit it to five hundred thousand. In my opinion, and I am, I am all for the project, it's not that, I, it is not our fault that it took a year and a half to get to this point. So that was one of the things that we, that there was just general discussion, but because I want this project to continue, then I, I don't see that we should incur it, but I'm not opposed to it at this point. So anything, anybody else wants to weigh in? If not, we will go to a vote. All right, Veronica.
All right, Commissioner Gaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Ball?
Yes.
Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
I think you guys did not do consideration to approve, so you just.
Oh, we considered the.
You didn't say denial or approval in your.
Come on, Scotty.
I read the thing after the.
You have to say whether you're approving or denying.
Okay.
Apparently they didn't write it.
Well, I think you can just.
Remake your motion, please, and then you can.
No, I'll pout here for a minute. Let me figure out. What's that still in it? So then, that's. Because see, it doesn't say anywhere on this piece of paper.
So just say.
Come here, no, come here, come here.
Make a motion to approve.
You just need to make a motion to approve ordinance.
Yes, I made a motion. But see, doesn't, see, the Stafford's.
I know.
Doesn't tell me nothing.
Just say right here, just say.
I know, but I'm just telling you.
I'm sorry, I didn't write that Stafford.
I'm just telling you.
Well, may I correct my motion of previous lack of less precision? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for approval of ordinance six oh nine, PPA for additional funds of thirty-three thousand for Highway eighty-two project.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Just waiting, maybe they changed their mind. All right, now you have to do it again.
Commissioner Gaddy?
Oh, I'm still, yes.
Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Yes, because under my understanding, under Robert's rules, we make all appeals at a positive place, so there wasn't for to.
Okay, I'm on.
I understood, let me go up in some books, all right. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move on in this meeting.
Okay.
Here's here, I make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh twenty-five, approval of road use agreement with Next Era Energy Transmission Southwest LLC.
Okay, I have a motion in a second for consideration of this resolution. Is, was that to approve?
Yeah.
Did you say it right?
Approval.
Sorry.
Approval, approval.
Oh, it is, it does have approval on it, okay.
I write it, so if you know.
There you go.
I read it in the way I got this.
Okay, Ms. Ball, I'm sure you have some discussion on this.
Well, it took a while, but we, we got them to approve Patrick's red lines in the agreement. They approved every one of the red lines we took out of the. We took out of their original agreement. As Patrick had said before, it left us with a few liabilities that he didn't want us to take on. So, but we removed all those and they agreed to it. So, now we just need you guys to read it.
Alright, any questions? I took care of my questions with you this afternoon, so as long as we're good. Veronica.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Ball?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Trivio?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2025-026, approve, there we go, Main Street funding for Lee Theater.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, everyone. Well, first of all.
Who are you?
I was about to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Joanna, I'm with Lovington Main Street, I'm the executive director. And I wanted to present the girls that I have with me, my assistant, Bruce and Lina, on the backs. And then we hired a new theater manager, her name is Scarlett.
Okay, I have better.
So, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here on behalf of Lovington Main Street to request your support of the resolution for our Lights On project at the Historic Lee Theater. This project represents a key step in our vision for revitalizing our downtown. And it's not just a place to pass through, but a destination where arts, culture, and community come together. We've been awarded 400,000 from the New Mexico Main Street Capital Outlay Fund to support the design and renovation of the stage, sound, and lighting system at the Lee Theater. These funds will allow us to completely upgrade the lighting and sound system and construct a larger, more modern stage, transforming the theater into a fully equipped venue for live performances, concerts, films, and community events. This next phase of the renovation is critical to enhancing the functionality, safety, and overall experience for both performers and audiences. Tonight, we're asking for your support through this resolution, which allows the City of Lovington to act as the fiscal agent for this grant. Additionally, we are grateful that the Lee County has committed to providing a project match of up to 50,000, demonstrating broad community investments in this effort. Over the past four years, Lovington Main Street has worked diligently to bring to life and functionality back to this historic space. Here are some of the key accomplishments and investments made in the theater. One of our first Capital AJ Outlay grants was 150,000. This was through New Mexico Main Street. We had another one for theater renovations, also through New Mexico Main Street, for 100,000, with a match from the Lee County for 50,000. We had the T-Mobile Hometown Grant for 50,000, and the Maddox Foundation as well, for 270,000. And that brings us to an approximate total of 620,000 already invested into the Historic Lee Theater. Thanks to these investments, we've already made several important improvements to the Historic Lee Theater, including a new roof, a modern HVAC system, upgraded plumbing and electrical, an improved sound system, fresh interior paint, a new point-of-sale counter and concession area, new flooring, and a beautiful new marquee. And I also brought a few pictures of the work that's been done over the past couple of years at the Lee Theater. So, you can see the restoration of the marquee. They were able to find that original painting on, and that's what it looks like when it's lit up at night. This was the lobby where the concession is, probably a couple months ago, I think it was, three or four months ago. And this is it, this is today. We got that picture this morning. And we were able to put all the seats back up as well. So, the Lights On project is more than just construction. It's about creating a space that serves as a hub for culture, creativity, and community. With your support, we can fully activate the potential of the Lee Theater and ensure it continues to serve Lovington for generations to come.
Question, question.
No, I just wanted to make a comment that the pictures are very nice. And just wanted to say thank you to Lovington Main Street. Everybody that's with Lovington Main Street, we appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Other questions?
No, I just have a statement. The coolest thing I know is I have a friend, and he has a picture of the marquee early in the morning when it was lit up, and he has that out his, whatever you think, on your phone when you call him, and that comes up. That's the coolest thing ever. So, I thought it was really awesome. So, I thought the money was well spent.
Just one more question.
Go ahead.
When are you anticipating on opening?
Right now, we are set to open April 18.
Oh, wow.
So, is that set in stone, or you still got stuff to do?
We still got stuff to figure out, but that's our anticipation.
It's like the road project, it's floating.
And we'll be doing like a, an opening for.
It is about the same time.
So, we'll do it by only.
Okay, so what, what will it be? Will it be a movie? What is your, what is your opening night? What is your expected opening night?
President Johnson, President Lovington Main Street.
Yes, sir.
As far as the opening, we're still kind of up in the air on that.
Right.
But we're open to any kind of suggestions of what the community might think they would like to see for a grand opening.
The movie Shrek. We have got, we've thrown around a couple of ideas, whether it's, you know, a comedian or live music, or actually just screening a movie. We haven't said anything in stone yet, but there's a couple ideas thrown around.
So, the thoughts are, everybody knows it's a movie theater, so obviously you have movies. So, we also are gonna do more than just movies. So, the grand opening possibly do something other than a movie. You know, comedians, a trivia, half hour, hour. A band come in for 30 minutes, an hour, something like that, have food trucks outside. But, I mean, I don't, I mean, we're definitely open for suggestions. Scotty, you ruined your invite by saying we're moving along as slow as the Main Street project.
That's alright.
In fact, we balled it up to.
But I agree with you, Chuck, I said it ought to be a celebration, is what you're getting at. Let's, let's make it a celebration. Let's, let's bring in whatever you want to bring in, but let's make it a celebration.
Throw your red carpet.
Yeah, roll out the red carpet on it and make it a celebration. That's what we need to do, because people have anticipated, just like Main Street, for years, and it's finally, it finally happened.
Finally here.
So, basically, the reason we're here tonight is to see if you guys would be our fiscal agent for this next grand opening.
Okay, and I had a question on that. Melissa, you may know, I don't know. Okay, if we're the fiscal agent for them, and the COG has to be our fiscal agent, how does that work? We've talked about this, it's been a while since we have, though. I know we've done it before.
So, actually, we have an agreement, one of the last grants that they did get, we went through the COG. But the COG has to have our approval that we want to do it, and then the agreement comes through the COG.
Okay, we just want to make sure we get all the.
It is doable, I've actually helped them write a couple of different resolutions. I didn't know about this one, but yes, it can go through. But the COG has to have our approval that we want to support them.
Like the way we did Mark Keeman? Like the way we did Mark Keeman?
Yes, it is.
I don't have any. We're gonna, we're gonna welcome whatever you decide to do. We're just ready, everybody is.
So, did you have a base resolution written?
Yes, I do.
Alright.
You don't have anything? I can go over it tomorrow, make sure.
We'll get that, I see.
You may have to come back in and sign it tomorrow, make sure the COG.
Alright, not a problem. And there's no match that.
No, the city.
No match.
Okay. Oh, there. She says, there it is. Alright.
So, when we get these grants, what it is, is we fund it upfront, and when they get the reimbursement, we get paid back. That's, that's why they have to have us be the financial backing, and the COG wants to make sure that we want to do that.
Okay. Alright, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, Veronica.
Scotty, before we do this vote, I've already reinstated your involvement.
Alright, that was good either way. Okay.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
And how long will you require us to be your fiscal agent? I don't want it to stretch out is what I'm saying.
It's the rest of our, I think it's one year is about.
Using the funding is a year, year and a half.
Year and a half, okay.
Usually, that's how long you have to spend the grants. I don't know if it's because you're learning grants, I haven't read the agreement.
And it's only on that project?
Most of them are anywhere from a year to 18 months.
I just saying, because if we ever end up in a slump, you know, remember, we're working the money upfront, so. So, if we run into slump, a year from now, then.
And a lot of the Main Street grants that she gets, she can actually get back pieces of it. She doesn't have to, like my projects, a lot of times I have to wait till the end to get it all back within MDOT. But through theirs, they can do payments during the midst of the granting, like a regular DVA grant.
Okay, sorry, I got one more question, and it's not for you. Crystal, I'm gonna ask you to help me remind, and city manager. Now that, back a couple of years ago, when I did the insurance, and I went through all of that, the theater was listed in a separate column than our normal buildings, along with basically the Lee County Museum buildings that are adjacent. And they were not covered for hail or any damage along that. It was probably a fire structure. I don't know with the new policy. I know, we need to look at that, and we need to make sure, because they just put a roof on, we've just gone through this insurance switch, and hopefully that'll help out a lot, and have that added to our normal coverage.
Right, I know for wind and hail, we're now, the terms are 500 per event, rather than $100,000 deducted per.
Per building, yeah, I know. It's good timing, I'm glad to be able to cover them.
It's listed on our rider.
Yeah, we just don't want to have a total loss and overlook this particular item.
I add to that, I have spoken with Mr. Miranda, and we are in the process of handling our part of the insurance. All that we're doing is what.
Alright, I think we're there. Ms. Brown.
Alright, so Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ball?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all, we're looking forward to it. Commissioner White, it's your turn.
Is it just bills or financials?
I think it's just bills.
I'd like to make a motion, pay the bills.
Alright, motion and a second, pay the bills. They have a few minutes to look those over. I think they did.
Listen to page three, Ventura J LLC. It says street installation. Page four, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's installation of the street department building. They didn't, they're getting new HPs, they're leading. Additionally, they had in their budget money for an installation of a building.
Okay, so, street department building?
Street department, yes, sir.
Okay, right underneath that, as far as Lee County Electric, I see electric bill for the pool. What's that? What's that, and it's 1,868 dollars.
We were brewing crack out there.
Yeah. It's really high.
I don't know if there's security lighting out there or not. It's obviously not the security lighting where we pay $9 a pole per month.
Right. You're 1,800 dollars, so we might have a lot of holes.
You know, I think they still pay internet for the pool as well.
So, the thing is, I'm looking at the pool, that's 1,868 dollars. Then I'm looking at the senior center, that's $80. So, the MVD, that's $91. You know, there's a big discrepancy. Wanted to ask also, I don't see the Troy Harris on here as far as for electric. What do we, what's the deal with that?
Have you noticed the poles listed, PO, all that's.
That's 60 million a year.
Yeah, that's what we're.
Even the, even the electric bill for the fire seemed a little high, 1,242 dollars. Is that for over here in 17th Street?
This one?
Seems high.
Makes me mad because they don't need to.
Kind of size of museums, 5,500. That's something.
That's why I started to think, I've got people in there 24/7 that they don't.
Yeah.
No, I agree, that is a lot.
Yeah, we need to do an audit of all of it.
And probably the private.
And other facilities as well.
Yeah, I just, I said, we don't even have Troy Harris on there.
Couldn't be, it could be human errors.
No. We have computers.
A typo.
There you go, there you go.
Going to the visas on page eight, the second one down, Finance Department. We got Parks Gopher.
So, that's the, I know what it is, I don't know why it's on the Finance Department.
It's because the Parks card won't cover it. So, they use the Finance Card. The Finance Card has a higher limit.
Basically on the credit card. I see we picked that one.
So.
They use a different credit card, but it doesn't mean it's coming out of.
That's what I'm asking. Is it coming out of Finance, or is it coming out of Parks?
No, we quoted it to the Parks.
Okay, just want to make sure on that.
Sometimes they have to use the Finance Card, it's too high.
Okay, so is that the same with, on page 10? Visa 15160, general travel finance for hockey balls and basketballs?
Travel finance, I'll just check.
I think it's for the center. Do you know, Isabella, that was the part you had?
That's probably you center.
Yeah, I'm just questioning, that's stuff that's being charged, what's it being charged to? Is it being put to the right?
They charged it to you center, didn't you?
But it's weird, because I don't think Joe has access to that part, but we double check on that.
He definitely has access to that part.
He has access.
Well, it's not so much just the card that was used, it's where you're taking the actual money.
Reimbursing the wire.
Exactly.
I don't have access to it.
I'll definitely check, but he usually does take out.
They may replace a card just to facilitate the transaction, but the important is.
Where it's being.
Cause you said it's.
What it's coming out of, right.
Right, yeah, I'll double check, but he's usually pretty good about it.
You're good, alright. Alright, hearing no further discussion, Veronica.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Ball?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddy?
Yes.
We will be, now be going into closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion pursuant to section 10-15-1, NMSA 1978 subsection 8-2 regarding limited personnel matters. Finance Department and personnel.
Alright.
Do I need to read your name on it?
I'll see.
No, that's fine. I have a motion and a second.
Are you the problem in the vote?
I am, perfect. Going to closed session.
So, it's gonna be Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Ball?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gaddy.